Good morning and welcome to the 2020-2021 budget hearing for the Depug Union Free School District. My name is Dr. Jeffrey Raby and I'm a proud superintendent of the Depug Schools. And I'm here to present the budget to the public today. We'll start off with our first slide of our presentation. This slide talks about the budget reductions that have been made since 2010 and the Great Recession. As you can see from this slide. Hold on, we're just getting the slides up sync. One second. There we go. So you should be seeing the same slide that I'm seeing here. This is a slide that represents the budget reductions that have been made since 2010 and the Great Recession. As you can see, the district has reduced our budgets by almost $8 million during that period of time. And we leveraged our enrollment decline during those reductions. So you can see we had about a 9.2% reduction in enrollment and at the same time reduced our staffing by 8%. Taking a look at our next slide and our enrollment projections, all the way from 2004 when we were up to over 2,300 students. We are projecting for the fall of 2020 to be at 1,812 students. And we are expecting a larger than normal kindergarten for this upcoming school year with about 145 students. One of the first things that we consider when we begin to build our budget back in the late fall, early winter are the three major cost drivers. The three major cost drivers in our budget, our retirement system, our health insurance and our salaries. And our retirement system is broken up into two different areas. One is the teacher's retirement system and one is for the non-instructional employees, the employee's retirement system. The TRS has a projected raise of 13.98%. Our ERS is an increase of 1.35%. Our health insurance has been fairly low over the last several years since we went to a self-funded platform. And will be less than 1% increase there. And then our negotiated salaries through our contractual obligations is an increase of 3.78%. For a total of 3.71% for those major cost drivers within our budget. And then on the flip side, we look at our revenue, our funding mechanisms to offset those expenditures. One of our major. Cost, or one of our major revenue streams is our New York State aid. We're looking at only a little over 1% increase at this point in time. And I'll get into a little bit more discussion in that later in the presentation. Or a little over $210,000. Our tax levy, based on the tax levy cap formula, will be set at 1.94% increase. Utilization of our fund balance compared to last year, we're looking at a 30% increase over what we used last year, $750,000. And the use of our reserves, our restricted reserves of using over $550,000 or 62.5% more than what we used for this current year. So we're looking at a revenue increase of almost $1.9 million or a 4.47% increase. Onto the tax levy. So there is a formula that's based on a law that was put in place back in and around 2010. And the allowable levy growth factor is equal to the lesser of 2% for the inflationary change using CPI. And the CPI was set in February by 1.81%. Therefore, the base for the exemptions, before we use exemptions, is 1.81%. And then the formula is as follows. We start with the 1920 tax levy, the current year, which is $18.1 million. We apply the tax-based growth factor, which is offered to us by the Office of Real Property Tax Services, which is based on the new growth within the school district. This is new bricks and mortar. We multiply that out and we get $23,572. And then we have to add in any pilots, payment due of taxes. We have six of them in the district and that is $197,000. And then we have to back out any capital expense that's in the local, within the local budget. And this is from the current year and that's $23,518. So we get an adjusted current year levy of $18,329,520. We then multiply that by the CPI for 1.81%. We then have to back out any estimated pilots for the 2021 school year. So we back out that $201,279. We have no eligible carryover from the previous year. So the tax levy before any further adjustments or exemptions would be $18,460,005. Taking a look at of the exemptions that we can utilize under the law. We start again with that levy limit before those exemptions. T-R-S is not above 2% in the previous year, so we cannot utilize that. ERS, I'm sorry, TRS and ERS are both not over 2%. So we can't utilize any of those exemptions. And then we look at the capital expense within the local budget. We add that back in and that's $23,279. And that's really the only exemption that we can utilize this year. We have no judgments or torts that are above 5% and no, no further exclusion. So therefore it's set at $18,483,284. And that would be the 1.94% increase in the tax levy cap. The law also allows, the law also allows school districts to go over that cap with a 60% vote. But as one can tell, the climate to go above the cap proves to be high risk with very few districts being successful in going over the tax levy cap. And we also consider the financial makeup of our school district when we even think about that possibility. And we look at our combined wealth ratio, which is set at .645. One being the average across the state. This is the seventh lowest out of the 23-year county school districts. Also, we look at our three-year average for free and reduced lunch percentage for kindergarten through sixth grade. And that's approximately 52%, which is ranked fourth highest in the area county. Another revenue stream that we utilize, as I mentioned earlier, is our reserves. We have restricted reserves that we use for very specific things and they can only be used for those particular items. One is the employee benefit accrued liability reserve for any retirement obligations. This is, will be utilized for $747,935 this year. Our ERS reserve, our employee's retirement reserve, for $250,000. Our teacher's retirement reserve will be utilized for $131,000. We're anticipating that we may have to utilize some unemployment expenses this year based on the pandemic crisis. So we slated $200,000 for that particular reserve. Our workman's comp reserve, we belong to a consortium and our obligation for that increase, we will be utilizing $100,000 out of that reserve. And then our capital reserve for vehicles and equipment, I'll get into this in a second. We're looking to purchase one new school bus and we utilize that reserve for that purpose. For $146,844 for a total of $1,575,779 utilizing our reserves. This is a graph showing the utilization of our reserves since 2014. And you'll see a couple spikes here. That is when we have drawn out of our capital reserve to complete our capital projects. We utilize that reserve again to lessen the impact or have no impact on the local taxpayers when we conduct our capital projects. So we're looking at a total amount left in our reserves for 2020 of $7,205,428.93. Part of the process. When we go through. Our budget development is to look for budget requests from all of our departments and all of our buildings. And we prioritize those, looking at those items that have the greatest impact on our students. As I mentioned earlier, we have a projected increase of kindergarten students above average. Therefore, one of the number one requests was a kindergarten teacher. We also have an increasing number of needs in our special education and social and emotional needs within our district. So we added, we're adding a school psychologist. We also started a few years back in order to assist teachers in the classrooms with our most needy populations is adding teaching assistants. And we're looking to add a kindergarten teaching assistant and a middle school teaching assistant within a special education class. Now you'll notice some of these other items are colored and I'm going to get into them a little bit more specifically when we talk about closing a projected future gap of revenue loss. You'll see the Wildcat Summer Camp is on there as a request, however, it's in red and will be actually reduced for two reasons. One is we're unable to come together this summer as deemed by the pandemic crisis in response. We also looked, we initially requested over $500,000 in technology replacement upgrades. We reduced that significantly and you'll see that in an upcoming slide. And then we have a number of other items that are on the list of potential reductions if we need to reduce our budget further. We have a musical advisor for the elementary school along with increased musical supervision. That has been a very popular endeavor and we're just looking for some additional support. Our Music First program, which has been ongoing, now has come into the budget. An increase in monitor availability for our cafeteria in the Huguette Elementary School. A part-time clerk typist in our elementary counseling center. District-wide equipment, this is various unforeseen equipment that we need in furniture replacement. High school equipment supplies along with middle school and Huguette Elementary. And then finally, buildings and grounds contractual, contractual increases and upgrades. And this includes parking lots, ceiling striping, light replacement and a continuation of improving our interior with our wall rep. So we looked at initially with our budget request of an increase of a little over $1 million. So with that in mind, we talked about our revenues, we talked about our major expenditures and also our requests. Initially, we had a proposed budget of a little over $47 million. And our draft revenues came in at a little over $46 million. So we had an initial budget shortfall of $1,084,390. And when we talk about making reductions, number one is to protect programming for students, protect reasonable class sizing at the same time adhere to contractual limits. Maximize district resources and efficiencies, review and evaluate needs versus wants. And review and evaluate budgeting and spending through year contracts. So we take all that into consideration when we take a look at our reductions. And you'll see that we balance the south between making reductions to our expenditures, our proposed expenditures, and identifying some additional revenue. So the first thing, we reduced various salary and benefit reductions. And this is based on some retirements and the breakage in those retirements and replacing those positions of $423,000. And again, this is really aligning our budgeted amounts and verifying our 2021 costs in the areas of health insurance, teacher's retirement system, and again, that breakage in retirement. We looked at some of our special education out of district replacements and based on CSE recommendations, we were able to reduce some of those out of district replacements and bring students back into our district. So we were able to reduce the budget by $84,000 there. In technology, if you remember on that request sheet, we were looking at increasing that by over half a million dollars. Well, we decided to reduce that by 200, reduce that request by $270,000. And target the replacement of the Chromebooks by utilizing our leftover SmartSchools funding. And also purchasing a more efficient firewall protection system. And then, as I mentioned, the Wildcat Summer Camp, we're able to pull that back out based on the pandemic crisis. So we were able to reduce our expenditures by $819,400. And then we took a look at the net changes to revenue. And this really represents some decreases in sales tax and state aid, but also the increase in the use of our reserves and fund balance. So we're able to bring that revenue side up by $264,990. And with that, we were able to eliminate that budget gap. So our budget would be set at $46,282,419. Now, if we need to further fill the gap, because as we all know, this pandemic crisis is having a significant impact on school districts, municipalities in general. And trying to identify what impact it could have on our major funding streams. And those are state aid and sales tax. Sales tax comes from the county. So we have to, we have to in the future, and again, as we learn this information, we are reacting to it. Identifying that amount of potential state aid and sales tax loss, but also identifying any additional federal stimulus monies as we continue to advocate for support from the federal government during this crisis. Then if needed, we'll reduce the amount of expenditures in a reverse prioritized order using that rationale of protecting programming for students at the utmost critical areas. Couple those reductions with further use of district-generated revenue and that's our fund balance. So if we need to further fill the gap, this is a tiered system. These are merely guideposts for us to take a look at depending on what potential loss we would realize through revenue. Again, either state aid or sales tax. So if we were able, if we were hit with a million dollar loss, we could initially cut about $488,123 out of our expenditure side and then use additional revenue from our fund balance of $511,877,000. So in those reductions, we would cut all of our supplies by 10%, saving $90,000. We would cut new equipment by $182,000, travel and conferences by 50% or $20,000. More additional technology of $105,000. We would reduce that part-time clerical and cafeteria monitor by $20,000 and fuel by $70,000. If we were hit with another $400,000 reduction in aid or sales tax, we would again cut an additional almost $190,000 for expenditures and use about $210,000 from our fund balance. And what that would mean on the expenditure side is cut summer curriculum, additional second shift custodian, reduce a middle school secretary by a .5 FTE, reducing that position by part-time. We have an individual that's retiring in that current position and we would just replace that person with a part-time. No one would be laid off per se. We would not add the new kindergarten teaching assistant or the advisor or supervisor for the musical. And also we would remove our Chromebook insurance policy for $26,000. Then taking a look at if we were faced with another $300,000 reduction, we would cut additional expenditures by $108,000 and use an additional $190,000 from our fund balance. So that would reduce our teachers on special assignment, supporting our teachers in the classroom with professional development. We would reduce that and that would be almost $50,000. And also it would reduce a leave replacement teaching position who picks up those classes of those teachers on special assignment. And that savings would be almost $60,000. So at the end of the day, we have a plan in place to be able to cover a reduction in state aid or sales tax of $1.7 million. Now, we don't know how much that may or may not be. And we don't know how much federal stimulus we may or may not get. But this is certainly a plan, a fluid plan that we are able to employ if we do receive further reductions in our revenue. So now let me go on to our vehicle reserve. I wanted to address this. So on May 19th in 2009, voters approved the establishment of the Vehicle Purchase Reserve Fund and again, supported that on December 13th, 2016 to re-establish that fund. Access funds had been placed in this reserve for future purchase of school buses and equipment. This reserve fund allows the district to make bus or equipment purchases that do not affect the amount of the current budget proposal or the tax levy. And the district also receives state aid for bus purchases in the subsequent years. And this aid continues to support the bus purchase program. So taking a look at our purchasing since 2015, you can see the amount of purchases that we have made and even the proposed purchase for this year amounts to a little over $1.7 million. Because we're using our own money and not paying insurance, that's a flat amount. But we receive aid back with interest and therefore we get aid back at a rate of $1.8 million. So at the end of the day, our projected interest received for these bus purchases is almost $80,000. So we're actually utilizing that reserve in a fiscally responsible manner to be able to increase our revenue on that, on that transportation aid. So our, our bus purchasing, as I mentioned, for this, this school year, we're looking to purchase one school bus for $146,844. It's a 48-passenger bus, a smaller bus that is equipped with Wi-Fi. That will make our buses with Wi-Fi, almost 30 buses. And then we would surplus the one vehicle that has over 47,000 miles on it. It's a 2009 Bluebird bus that has had numerous mechanical issues. Talking now about our capital outlay program. This is a program that we've had in place for the last several years. And it allows a school district to tackle a small capital project within the general fund. So we look at a small $100,000 project. It's an opportunity to, you know, make, conduct these improvement projects that cost no more than $100,000 are covered under one particular trade. So it might be just mechanical, electrical, plumbing. This year, we're having upgrades to our gymnasium, taking out some old glass block windows that, that have some asbestos in them and we're replacing them with new windows along with a couple basketball rims. And the district must show this expenditure in its annual budget plan and then will receive aid in the following year. District may receive aid for a maximum of one such project in one particular year. So as the district completes these projects on an annual basis, the aid begins to cover 80% of the project. So if you take a look at what we're able to do over a 10-year, 10-year span, we can do a million dollars worth of work and receive aid of $720,000. So we can do a million dollars worth of work in 10 years for $280,000. And this year, our plan for our capital outlay for 2021 is to address the high school pool interior finishes, accessories and equipment, specifically replacement of our starter blocks. We've done a lot of improvements throughout the district in our large areas. This past year, we did a tremendous amount of work in our high school gymnasium. And it's now time to address our aging pool area. Taking a look at the overall budget and the area of expenditures. As, as we mentioned earlier, we're looking at a total general fund budget with vehicles increase of $1,283,114 with an increase in administration and general support of $164,000. Instructional, $705,000, transportation, $4,000, benefits, $336,000, debt service, $47,000. And we're looking, we're using less money out of our reserve for vehicle purchase than we did last year. So a reduction of $232,153. Looking at graphically, our instructional program makes up 53% of our expenditures, which is a good thing. We're a school and that's what's most important to us. Administration and general support is 10%, transportation 5%, benefits 23%, debt service and obligations 9%. On the other side, our revenues, we'll have an increase in state aid of $213,991. We're looking at a reduction in sales tax of $302,000. Appropriated fund balance, an increase of $750,000. Use of reserves, an increase of $567,000. Miscellaneous revenue, this can be various charges and tuitions that the district puts out of $35,000. A tax levy increase of $351,227 to offset that balance. And again, looking at this graphically. We, we receive 45% of our revenue from state aid, 40% from property tax, 3% from reserves, 7% from appropriated fund balance, 1% from that miscellaneous revenue and then 4% from sales tax and other charges. Looking at a required three-part budget, there's an increase in administration of 6%, program 2.67%, capital expense 6.86%. Our total budget increase is 3.62% or a dollar change of $1,616,67. Taking a look at the estimated tax rate considering no changes in assessment. So we start off by looking at full value or 100%, at 100%. If you look at the 2020, 21 estimated dollar change, it's a dollar 49 per thousand or eight, a little over 8%. In Chitewauga, they're only assessed at 83% of value. So their increase in dollar change would be $2.31 per thousand or 10.64%. In Lancaster, they moved from 77% value last year to, they're now at 100% full value. So they have a reduction. They're looking at a reduction of $4.02 per thousand or 16.77%. So what are some things that have an impact on the levy, the rate and the bill? So when our expenditures are down, we can bring that levy, rate and bill down on the revenue side. If our expenditures are up, it makes sense that we have to make up that revenue and the levy, the rate and the bill come up. When revenues are up, in other words, we can increase in state aid or we get increase in sales tax. The other part of that equation on the revenue side, the levy, rate and bill can come down. If revenues on state aid and sales tax are down, like this year, we have to offset that equation on the revenue side and bring the levy, the rate and the bill up. With regard to assessments, when total assessments are up, there's more value to be spread across the particular municipality. There's no impact to the levy. So if the levy is set at, you know, $16 million, the municipality of the school district still needs it $16 million on the revenue side. But since there's more value, we can bring that rate and the bill down. If on the other side, the assessment value is down, like we're experiencing this year between Chitewauga and Lancaster, again, no impact on the levy, the dollar amount that's needed. But the rate and the bill would typically go up because there's less value to spread amongst all of the taxpayers. So taking a look at this a little bit deeper, we take a look at estimated change in the 2021 property tax bill for a home assessed at $100,000. And if you focus in on the 2021. And if you focus in on the 2021 house home assessed value with equalization rates applied, the equalization rate in Chicoaga went from 85% last year to 83% this year. So that home is, the value of that home is $120,481.93. Therefore, the tax bill would be $2,895.67 for an increase of $340.76. And then on the Lancaster side, again, a home that's assessed at $100,000. Last year, they were at 77%. This year, 100%, so they went from $129,870 to $100,000 this year because they're assessed at the 100%. That bill would be $1,994.83 and a reduction of $1,118.56. And again, that's because of that shift from 77% assessed value to 100% assessed value. Taking a look at a 21-year budget history for the district, on average, the tax levy increase since 2001 has been 2.05% with an average budget increase of 2.47%. Looking at the two propositions that will be on your absentee ballots, the first one is the budget. Proposed budget is set at $46,282,419 with a budget-to-budget increase of 3.62%. The budget-to-budget dollar change is $1,616,067. The tax levy would be set at $18,483,284. The tax levy increase is $351,227 with a tax levy percent increase of 1.94%. Proposition two is about our vehicles and our buses. The vehicle purchased from the reserve fund would be $146,844. There's a 48-passenger bus with Wi-Fi, and we would surplus one vehicle with over 47,000 miles. If our budget was to be unsuccessful on June 9th, we would then have to move to a contingency budget. So as I mentioned, where our current proposed budget is set at, we would not be able to raise the tax levies. So we would, the proposed tax levy increase is 1.94%, it would be zero. The budget would be reduced down to only a 2.83% increase. We would have to reduce all non-union salary, which is a little over $19,000. We would reduce training, equipment except state-aided hardware and health and wellness equipment by $232,125. We would also have to pull out that capital outlay project for $100,000 for a total reduction of $351,227. And under a contingency budget, there would be no community use of our facilities without full reimbursement of those expenses. On the ballot this year for Board of Education seats, there are two three-year terms. One A is incumbent Amy Doody, and two A is our new candidate Nicholas LaMarca, replacing Donna Kapanos. Our budget vote day is set for Tuesday, June 9th, 2020, by absentee ballot only, and those ballots are due to the district by 5:00 p.m. Voter eligibility, you must be a U.S. citizen. You must be 18 years of age. You must be a resident of the school district for a period of 30 days immediately prior to the vote. Are there any questions?
Yes. How will the community be notified of higher budget? The results or the cases in the ballot?
Yes, we'll send out a notification right away through our social media. We'll do a Blackboard Connect and also post that on our website.
And then maybe just say it doesn't pass, then what is the next program?
Yeah, it's the contingency budget.
That's it?
Yeah.
That home is, that's it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Hopefully you didn't hear the question.
The question from Donna Kapanos, one of our board members, was how would the community be notified of the budget results? And we will conduct a Blackboard Connect, post it on our website, and use our social media platforms as soon as the results are realized on Tuesday, June 9th. Thank you for participating in the budget hearing, and this recording will be posted on our website shortly. Have a great day.